It is now loving life, Casey. How about you? Looking forward to uh next week.
If we could all have a seat.
Party start.
I would like to call the meeting to order if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. I do want to make two announcements. One, we did held an executive session yesterday for legal issues. Uh and tonight, prior to this meeting, we also held a uh an executive session for personnel reasons. Alright, uh next on the agenda, Commissioner Evans, do we have some opening comments?
Yes. Hi, welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. Our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. Board of Commissioners is here to represent everyone in count and we strive to be sure our decisions address the needs of all. We're all on this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. Old Lang Syne, wow. Another year is almost over. The weather outside is frightful, but seeing all of you here is delightful.
Good one.
Hey, I get paid for that sometimes. Thank you for braving the elements to join us tonight. It's been an honor serving you in 2022. And hope you're all starting to see the promise of a new count starting to take shape around us. Please be safe on the roads this holiday weekend, especially with the deep freeze following all of this precipitation. And if you drink, don't drive. It's just stupid and reckless. It could cost the lives of the innocent driver who chose not to drink and drive. So make the road safe so that everyone can enjoy. Hallelujah. Last Wednesday, the Chester County Board of Commissioners unanimously voted to approve LERTA. And now the real work begins. Shopping the idea to some already successful small businesses that think you might all like to see.
No, stay muted.
You might like to see uh come here. LERTA gives us major tool needed to take count to a new level. Dream big or wake up small. Count Township's open for business. Remember, when you're rushing around finishing up your holiday shopping and support our small businesses. They're the backbone of our community. These troubling times. For all the bad press Coatsville area school district receives, there was a surprisingly little notice given to some very uplifting news events of the past couple of weeks. So I thought I'd share them. A couple of weeks ago during a class at Coatsville High, student sprang into action and used the Heimlich maneuver to save the life of another student who was choking. Another uplifting story is about the Coatsville Middle School Robotics Team advancing to the state finals by winning an innovation project award for an efficiently designed robot. The state finals will be on January 28th. And last, it's not just us. An article published on December 14th on Yahoo News read, "Fake Active Shooter Threats Continue to Plague Schools Across U.S." It detailed an NPR story of over 180 reports of swatting incidents in 28 states from September 13th through October 21st. And since then, incidents have continued with the same level, if not a greater level of intensity and consistency. It's not okay, but it's not just us. Lastly, be the joy in someone's holiday this year. The holidays can be a lonely and brutally depressing time for many. If you know anyone who has no one, has recently lost a loved one, is homebound, anything, just be the joy in their holiday. Take a moment to drop by and bring them some love. Compassion, empathy, peace and love. These are the greatest gifts any of us can give. Happy holidays, everyone.
Alright, thank you Commissioner Mark.
Beautiful. Alright, uh next on the agenda, we do have the citizens to be heard for uh agenda items. Uh none in this uh in this room? Anybody in the Zoom world? Yep. No rush, we have all night. Before the storm.
There's nobody with.
Okay. Uh next on the agenda. Yeah Cheryl. I think it's muted. I see a mute sign. Think you need to, there you go. Almost. You're still muted. I'm sorry Cheryl. There you go.
Did that work?
Yes.
Okay. Um under the ordinance is where you're raising or instituting new taxes. Could you explain them as you go through them, what the tax was and what it is now, what the difference is?
So there's no, no changes in the rates for 2023?
At all.
We, yeah, correct, but we have to in the ordinance set out what the taxing rate is. So all of those rates will remain the same for 2023.
Okay, that would be helpful to say that.
We just did.
No, 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 but I know that. I'm saying in your agenda, it would be nice to have said that, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you Cheryl. Alright, next with Township Solicitor, Ms. Camp.
Thank you. The first thing is a decision in order for 4102 Associates LLC. They're the owner of a 6.93 acre parcel at 4060 Edges Mill Road. They filed a conditional use application seeking to develop the property with a one-story 41,000 square foot building to be used as flex space. The board held the hearing on, originally it was October 27th, 2022, but then it was continued um to November 17th, 2022. And I have a proposed order that I had circulated to the board. Mr. Nagel represented the applicant and had provided me with, after I had drafted the decision, had provided me with conditions that the applicant agreed to accept and I had already encapsulated all those conditions into the order. So um the proposed order would grant the conditional use approval. The conditions are as follows. The flex space building would be developed in accordance with the testimony and evidence presented at the hearing, as well as the plan that was presented at the hearing, as such plan is revised to comply with the conditions of this approval, as well as to obtain land development approval. The plan has to be revised to comply with the latest township consultant review letters, which are set forth in this order. The applicant must obtain all necessary outside agency permits in order to develop the property, which would include highway occupancy permit for the driveway, NPDS permit, planning module approval or exemption from the same. The fourth condition is applicant would implement the changes to the plan that it voluntarily agreed to, which are outlined in the order in finding effect number 63. All the lighting on the exterior of the building must comply with the requirements in the ordinance. All new light fixtures installed in the parking lot must be directed inward and downward, appropriately shielded to prevent glare on adjacent properties. The exterior lighting must be operated on a timer that will turn the lights off after the business is closed. An applicant will not install any lighting along Edges Mill Road unless necessary to illuminate the access driveway. Applicant must provide energy efficient lighting fixtures. The architectural facade of the building must be substantially similar to the architectural rendering, which was admitted as exhibit A6. And that was a change from the original submission that applicant made. That was done to appease and with recommendations from the historical commission and the neighbors. Access to the property must be from the existing access drive. Applicant will prohibit truck traffic from turning left out onto Edges Mill Road and has to install appropriate signage. Applicants shall install additional landscaping, which is depicted on their landscape plan, which was admitted as exhibit A12. They must replace deciduous trees proposed along the frontage with evergreen trees. They are prohibited from using deep dynamic compaction to improve the subgrade. They must extend public water to the building and public sewer. And they must accept all these conditions, which the applicant, as I said, has indicated they would do so. So that is the proposed order before you. If anybody has any questions, I can answer them.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, and again, I want to applaud them for uh and Mr. Nagel for working so openly with the historical commission to make sure that we can all be good neighbors for a very long time.
Comments? Public comment at this time? None here in the room? Zoom world? There's no other questions. I will entertain a motion to approve the conditional use uh for the property 4060 Edges Mill Road.
Done, moved.
Moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Sounds good, five zero. Congratulations. Thank you.
Denise, do you have, you have this to them to sign? Okay. The second thing is a motion to consider granting preliminary and final subdivision and land development approval for Thorndale Real Estate LLC for 3205 Lincoln Highway. So applicant is the owner of the 10.52 acre parcel. It's located on the north side of Lincoln Highway near the intersection of North Bailey Road. The property is in the TV1 Thorndale Village zoning district and the Lincoln Highway overlay district zone two. Applicant proposes to redevelop the property as a shopping center in two different phases. Phase one, which applicant was permitted to commence without the need for subdivision or land development approval, was the renovation of the Kmart building. Applicant, um I believe is completed renovating that, but has two tenant spaces. One with 70,745 square feet for the Lomax Carpet and Tile Retail Store and the second for an Aldi grocery store. Fault phase two, which is the subject of these particular plans that's before the board, is the subdivision of the property into three lots. The development of an approximately 2,336 square foot Chipotle restaurant with drive-through and an approximately 2,208 square foot restaurant cafe with drive-through. The plans were prepared by Land Corps Engineering Consultants dated May 13th, 2022, last revised October 28th, 2022. This follows up from the conditional use approval that was granted, as well as there was a zoning decision that granted variances for signage. The proposed decision would grant the preliminary slash final subdivision and land development approval, subject to the following conditions. The development must comply with all relevant terms in the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, stormwater ordinance, unless the board waives any of those provisions through this decision. Applicants shall comply with the latest township review letters, which are again are listed in the motion. The plans contemplate certain waivers that are set forth on page three. One is to allow the approval of a combined preliminary final plan. The second is to not require the plans to show all of the significant features within 200 feet of the property. The third one is to allow the sidewalks along Lincoln Highway to be constructed outside of the legal right of way. And that's based on limited available space um along uh North Bailey Road frontage. Excuse me, along Lincoln Highway. And then for the sidewalk along North Bailey Road, if the sidewalk would be constructed flush against the back of the curb. And that is because of the location of the fire hydrant and the utility poles um in the area adjacent to the Audi parking lot. The fourth proposed waiver is to allow landscaping along North Bailey Road to be placed more than 10 feet from the right of way. Next is to use PennDOT's background growth rate in lieu of the 1.6, in lieu of 1.6 per U. And that, that's a typical, I actually think we should make a change to that. Every applicant seems to request that and we, um your traffic engineer does not have an objection to that. And then the last waiver is from the stormwater ordinance to allow certain 18 inch diameter pipes to be sloped at 0.5% to minimize trenching depths. So those are the waivers and I may turn it over to Mr. Colagreco and the engineer if anybody has any questions on those, but let me continue to go through the motion. Um applicant must comply with conditional use approval as well as zoning decision. They must um reimburse the township for any consultant review fees. They must execute development agreement, financial security agreement, and post financial security in an amount approved by the township engineer prior to the plans being released for recording. They must execute a stormwater operation and maintenance agreement and record it with the plans. They must secure all regulatory permits necessary to develop the property. All deliveries to the restaurant pad sites are restricted to hours when the restaurants are closed. And that was something that came out through the conditional use. Applicant must include this restriction on the plans and in the leases for those pad sites. Condition 11 deals with the waiver to the sidewalk along Lincoln Highway. And it suggests that the board will grant the waiver provided applicant prepares an easement agreement, granting an easement over any area of the property where the sidewalk is located. So because they're not going to be putting it in the right of way, we need to make sure that there's an easement on the property to allow the public to utilize that sidewalk. Applicant must demonstrate to the board in writing that it has in good faith negotiated with Thorndale West LP, who owns the adjacent property along Lincoln Highway to the east, um for permission to extend the sidewalk onto their land. And if applicant is able to obtain that approval, they are, they are required to extend the sidewalk to go onto that property. As far as the extension of the sidewalk onto the property along North Bailey Road, it's owned by Valley Run Shops Condominium Owners Association. That sidewalk actually will be within the right of way. And so this condition requires them to um to extend the sidewalk onto that property. Because of the cost to do the extensions beyond their property boundary, the applicant had requested that the board waive the fee in lieu of open space in the amount of $3,976.61. And I did speak with the township engineer who indicated that the cost to extend the sidewalk both on Bailey Road and Lincoln would be well in excess of that number. So that's, that is why I drafted it the way, but that obviously is for board discussion. Um the next condition is that they prepare reciprocal easement, which grants cross easements for any shared utilities. They must execute and record a new easement agreement that properly identifies the area of the existing private driveway in the rear. So Mr. Lehman pointed out that where the actual pavement is, is not within the boundaries of the easement. And so they need to try to fix that. One of the things that came out in the applicant's stormwater report is that the existing stormwater basin located on the property to the rear, um it requires some repairs and those are detailed in a report that Land Corps Engineering prepared dated October 28th. And this condition would require them to make those particular repairs. The rest of the ones are just typical standard prepare, um record the plans, prepare a digital file and provide a 11 by 17 format to the township. So those are the proposed conditions. If anybody has any questions about the plan, Mr. Colagreco and his team are here. If anybody has any questions on the waivers or anything on the motion, please, please let us know.
Commissioners, any questions?
Can you, can you talk about the basin for a minute? What, what repairs are needed in the basin?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Ryan McMoore, project engineer from Land Corps. Yeah, we prepared the inspection report and identified uh just some minor maintenance was needed to the outlet structure. So it's a, it's a vertical stand pipe with an outlet pipe that goes through the basin berm and outlets into the stream. So the uh, the actual vertical stand pipe, which is the outlet structure, it's just, it's old. It's an old metal pipe. So we're proposing that that be replaced. Essentially in its, in exact same configuration, just with a newer material. And then the outlet pipe also was just feeling its age. It's an old metal pipe and it's just in need of replacement. So we're proposing it to be replaced in the exact same size configuration. So there's, there won't be any changes to the operations of the basin. It will just be with newer materials.
And that's the rear basin. Um do you just describe us what you're doing for the main site? You're, you're putting in some new stormwater, right?
Sure. Yeah. So the, you know, as we all know, there, there's a substantial amount of green space that's being created with the landscaping and the channelization islands that are proposed throughout the center. So that, you know, is one component of the stormwater management. And then for the compliance with the stormwater management ordinances for peak rate control, there's a stormwater management basin in the form of underground stormwater basin that will be proposed under the parking lot in front of the Lomax building. And Lomax building that will be um just a combination of stone, pipes, geotextile material that will be underneath the parking lot.
And that would be completed before construction begins on the pad sites, correct?
It will be completed at the time of the site improvements for the pad sites.
But a used occupancy would not be granted for the pad sites until that work is done, Mark.
Thank you.
Are there any other changes from conditional uses? The plan, the same or is, have things been changed?
It's, I, I would say it's substantially the same as what we've been talking about. You know, it's the two pad sites, commercial, you know, commercial restaurant, fast casual restaurants with the drive-through, sidewalk, site improvements. Um the plan, the, the conditional use plan has evolved to a land development plan. So there's just a substantial amount of additional detail, uh engineered detail that really supports the, the picture that we spoke about and, you know, at length at the time of conditional use. So it's substantially similar to, the land development plan is substantially similar to what the board had reviewed and we discussed at the time of conditional use.
Do you have a graphic to show us the sidewalk planned along Lincoln Highway?
Yeah, I have a, I have a, a board that I can put up on the easel.
That'd be great.
Lowell, can you hear? Right, he would, he asked you to pull up the plans so that they can be displayed on the TV screens within the meeting room? Ryan, why don't you get the board as well? Do you have a board? Thank you. So just so the audience understands, Lowell is the township engineer from Arrow Engineering. So he is participating via the Zoom format and has just pulled up the land development plan. Thank you Lowell. So now Ryan has a colored rendering, I guess, of the same plan. What would you prefer to look at? Okay, sure.
At the bottom of the screen on bottom right-hand side, that's the, essentially where the, where the Kmart property meets uh meets up with the frontage of Joey's Pizza. And essentially that's where the, you know, where the current plan proposes to start the sidewalk and right where Lowell has his hand or pretty close to it, that's that off-site gap. Right, you know, where there's a disconnection and uh we're working with the adjacent property owners to, to make that connection as part of the land development. So we're picking up the Joey's Pizza existing sidewalks uh along the Lincoln Highway frontage, carrying it along the entire length of the site's frontage on Lincoln Highway across the existing, I guess, the reconfigured driveway until it gets to the edge of the property that meets up with the Domino's Pizza, where the sidewalk on Lincoln Highway has to stop. And then it will turn inward or north into the site to essentially wrap right around the Domino's Pizza property. And it'll run right out to where the Bailey Road sidewalk improvements are currently under construction now. And they'll run the full length of Bailey Road all the way up to the sites, the end of the site's frontage, which is the beginning of the Rafini property. And that's, if you pan up. That's the location of the other gap that Kristen had outlined in her, in her introduction. And that gap will be will, will make that connection as part of the land development improvements.
And along Lincoln Highway, this will all be at street level?
That's correct.
Just a question, Kristen Camp, uh was the, uh because I know we, we talked about the um the fee in lieu of uh open space at the conditional use, was the addition of the sidewalks not included in conditional use um talks or was that a later item?
I can't remember if the conditioners addressed sidewalks. I, I don't think we did because it was part of a standard requirement. So they would need a waiver from you. The ordinary rule is they have to put the sidewalks in along the frontage.
But just on their property or, or the gaps too?
No, no, there was no discussion about the gaps as the conditioners. That was not required by conditional use. Yeah.
Okay. Cause I'm just trying to figure out whether, I, I'm usually opposed to waiving the open space fees, but if this isn't, if that would not have been a requirement and that's a trade-off, then maybe it's, it's something worth talking about.
Yeah, it was not, that was not discussed. The, the gap in the sidewalk was not discussed and was not required as a condition of the conditional approval.
Okay.
So, and maybe, uh Ryan, can you give an estimate of what the additional cost is for that added sidewalk? Was it as, as a comparison to what the fee in lieu of open space is?
Good evening, Carlton Smith. The number we got from the contractor was 15,000 approximately for both the extensions. That was not part of the conditional use. That's why we asked for the in lieu of, which was I think just under 4,000. Our cost would be probably approximately 15,000 less if we run into any issues and it might be more.
And Kristen Camp, do you remember, did we just take that out of the conditional use or was there a requirement for open space in the conditional use?
I don't think we did. I don't know if we addressed it.
Okay. Cause I remember at the last minute, we, they had asked for a waiver. Maybe we just didn't include the waiver in the conditional use. But maybe we should look at that because if they're conflicting, what happens if it says they have to pay?
Well, I would ask, I mean, whatever the board decides tonight, we'll ask, I mean, that would be.
I remember at the end of the, of the hearing that there was a push to get a waiver of, of um open space fee and that we voted it down. We voted to.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we agreed to pay the open space fee at the time. There was no request at that time. There was no decision to extend it on property that we don't own. If the township doesn't want the sidewalk extended, we could easily cut the check for $4,000.
No, I'm just asking, does the conditional use speak to the open space? If it does, and it says in the conditional use, you must pay it, but the land development says you're not paying it.
The ordinance actually says it. The ordinance requires it. And I think the township just said comply with the township ordinance.
Okay.
But we could not have asked for a waiver of it at that time because it was, it's a, it's a subdivision land development requirement, not a zoning requirement.
I just wanted to make sure there's not conflicting.
I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay.
Cause we, again, we couldn't have asked for the waiver. This is the first time we could have asked for that waiver.
Okay.
And, and Josh, just to cover our bases, what I will do is, again, assuming the board is willing to vote on this, is we can add a sentence that says, notwithstanding anything stated in the conditional use order, the applicant shall adhere to this motion. You know, if there's an inconsistency between the conditional use and this motion, this motion controls, something like that, we could say.
Okay.
If we, if we had to do that.
I did have one question about the sidewalk over by Joey's. I know the sidewalk comes up to a telephone pole or light pole or something and wraps around it. Is that the one you're, you're presenting to, to connect with?
Yes, was there a question about the telephone pole, the utility pole?
Yes. Would that be moved and you would straighten that out or are you just gonna wrap the sidewalk around it?
We'll wrap the sidewalk.
Okay. I think that's easier, but.
Yeah, we, yes, that's the approach.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions on this? I'll ask residents. If there's any, yes. Mr. Mus, come on, come on up here, uh Mr. Mushrush, come to the microphone.
Is that microphone on?
It is.
You, you do speak loud, but just name, name your, your name and address.
David Mushrush, 3600 Homestead Lane, Thorndale. I just have a question about that subterranean retention basin, stormwater drainage basin. Where is that located there? And how's it wrapping around? And what's the capacity?
Question?
That be the old one that they're repairing or the new one?
The subterranean, low surface.
In, in the main parking lot?
Excellent.
Okay.
So it's gonna go right underneath the, the Lomax parking lot? Yeah, as you can see, the, you know, right in front of the Lomax, uh the main, I guess it's the old main entrance to the Kmart. There's a thick gray dashed line that goes left to right.
Okay, I see it down there. I see that.
Yeah, so it's, it's a series of perforated pipes that are inside of a stone bed that's all wrapped in a fabric and then the bottom of that are inside of a stone bed that's all wrapped in a fabric and then the bottom of it's going to be lined. There is, yeah, in compliance with the township's ordinance.
Standard, standard answer there, David. All right, any questions from Zoom world? Well, board, uh, I guess first question is the the waiver. We'll uh, I guess uh, consensus on how we feel about this waiver. Since they're extending the sidewalks uh, to meet up with the other properties.
I'm typically not in favor of that, but I think the public benefit outweighs the three thousand dollars.
Kind of agree with you there. Commissioners?
I agree.
Okay. We can entertain a motion to uh, consider approval for the preliminary final subdivision and land development uh, with the uh, approved waiver for open space.
I wanted to state something. Well, respect and I I like all you guys. You're all really good guys. Again, I just want to be on the record with this one last time. I have spoken to township planners, city planners, township commissioners, supervisors, attorneys. The key success of every township, borough and city is a rail line. This township has a rail station. And it is within a stone's throw of this location and it just baffles me that the applicant didn't have the foresight to go out and get the funding and do the right thing with this spot. That would made a lot of money for them and would have really improved this township. Because now we're stuck with a dead space. Yeah, you'll get people coming in, doing some business. But it's a dead space that could have been the most thriving part of this township across from a rail station. And that's all. No, no foresight, no planning, just oh, grab it, make some money.
Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. All right, I have a motion on the floor or or do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Four to one passes. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas.
You too.
Merry Christmas.
Really, everyone have a great, be safe out there, have a wonderful holiday season.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Township Engineer.
Lowell's not going anywhere.
All right, next on the agenda, Township Engineers.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners.
Happy holidays to you.
As well.
See you again.
Uh, Carl Schmidt with uh, Arrow and Casey Lulon as well. And there's eight items on the agenda. Uh, we thought we'd go over them. Um, I have a few to address. And uh, and Casey's gonna do some as well. Uh, item number one on your agenda. Um, I'm gonna add item eight afterwards as well as the same project. Um, I'll pause then to uh, wait for the motion or discussion. So item one is a request for consideration of final payment application number three to Brightfields Inc. in the amount of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and forty-one cents. This is in relation to the demolition at two fifty-eight Horseshoe Drive. Uh, it's important to note that this is um, this is um, final payment for the project. The project has completed. Contractor fulfilled their contract. Uh, so this is the final payment for that demo project. So I'll pause for um, any questions or motion.
Commissioners, any questions? Residents, any questions on this? None in the township building? Any in Zoom world?
Again, this is covered with a grant, right? Thank you.
Entertain a motion to uh, make final payment to Brightfields Inc. in the amount of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty and forty-one cents. So moved. Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero.
Good evening, everyone. We're just doing a little tag team tonight. Uh, the second item on the agenda is consideration to award the lowest responsible bid to Custer Excavating in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars, no cents for the Park Drive Stormwater Convention System Replacement Project from bids opened on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The bids have been reviewed and vetted and forwarded to your township staff for review tonight and approval, possible approval.
Commissioners, any questions?
Is that amount in the ballpark of what we were anticipating?
Yes, yes, that was right around the the estimate.
Excellent.
This is replacing three pipes that have collapsed in that development. Any other questions, Commissioners? Questions from residents? None? Entertain a motion uh, to approve or award the lowest responsible bid to Custer?
Custer Excavating.
Custer Excavating uh, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one even.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans.
And a third by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's good, five zero. Moving right along.
Very good. And item number three on the agenda is the big one we've all been waiting for. Request for consideration to award the lowest responsible bidder to Low Bar Site Development Corporation in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-two cents for municipal drive, bridge. For bids open on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. These bids, these bids came in uh, for us about half of what we expected, which is great. But we have vetted the 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 lowest responsible bid and contracted uh, contacted uh, other uh, references and everything else. Everything is is right on target. So we're recommending approval tonight. If the board sees fit, we will uh, issue the notice to proceed letter on the twenty-seventh of December.
And what what is their es- do they have an estimated time in the?
This is going to be a a precast structure. So it's about twelve weeks. Once they receive that notice to proceed for constru- for construction of that uh, structure offsite at the manufacturer. And we we have a very delicate, as as Ray and I have been going back for weeks on, there's a, there's a uh, sanitary sewer line that's right there. We're gonna be about two feet away from that line with a footer for this bridge. Um, so the construction has to happen in very quick succession. Um, we can't do a bunch of demolition on it and then wait a few weeks for the bridge to come.
Right.
It's gonna have to happen very quickly over a matter of days. Demolition, shoring up of the sewer line and then placement of the bridge. So once we get that bridge structure uh, uh, completed fabrication, um, then we're gonna, we will meet with the contractor and come up with a very, very, very succinct timeframe for activity uh, because of that sewer line. We have to protect that and it's gonna be very quick.
You don't wanna mess with Scott's sewer line.
No, 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 no. That was, we've been going round and round on that for weeks.
And just to be clear, this this price didn't include the design or uh, the inspections or permit fees or any of that stuff?
Correct. You signed a separate uh, professional services agreement last fall to do the design bidding. And all the, all the way through uh, construction management, construction observation and project closeout.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions on this?
That were in a perfect world, looking mid-April, right?
Yes, and I'll, I've, I've, we've already contacted FEMA about an extension uh, for this and more. And with your potential approval tonight, I'll be contacting Jonathan Skripka at FEMA. I've already spoken to him on the phone. He said you you guys are making great progress, especially with with possible bid award tonight. They'll grant us an extension to get the projects done without without question.
Good. All right, and this is for the municipal drive bridge. So residents, uh, any questions? Any from the audience? Any from Zoom world? Uh, this is exciting. Entertain a motion to uh, award the lowest responsible bid. Oh, I did have a question. Uh, you did have one lower bid.
Yes.
Why are they kicked out?
Did, uh, through the vetting of the of all the bids.
Yes.
Uh, they were, yes, they were lower, thirty grand or so. However, their experience, they're they've built a lot of sidewalks. Uh, we have no experience with them building bridges.
Okay.
Um, and also they're not Penn Doc pre-qualified, which is it's a step they may should have taken and they probably, we will after not getting this bid. But we required it in the bid documents.
applications of the bid?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, they're only about what, fifteen, sixteen thousand lower? So it wasn't a huge difference.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a large difference.
Just wanted to clarify why. All right, perfect. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
There you go. Was it?
No, it was Josh.
I I didn't hear Josh. Oh, okay. So Denise, you got that? Okay, you got all three of them. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's good, five zero. Looking forward to our new bridge.
We are too. Thank you so much. Uh, and number four on the agenda is also um, another Culver Bridge project, the Moore Road, uh, I'm sorry, Moore Drive, Moore Road Bridge Project from bids opened on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. We're recommending award to Construction Master Services LLC in the amount of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, seventy-six cents, again, for the Moore Road Bridge replacement.
When do you plan to start work on that?
We can start, this is going to be a cast in place. So winter conditions, they can pretty much work all winter uh, with additives to the concrete and proper construction management. We will issue the notice to proceed on next Tuesday after the holiday. So they could, they could start as soon as we do the pre-construction meeting with township staff and our staff. So we will have this bridge done probably much sooner than municipal.
Would this be done by about April, do you think, or?
Before, most likely. If, as long as we have night, I shouldn't say nice weather, but normal winter weather, they can work throughout the winter. So this will be much quicker. And once we have the pre-construction meeting, we'll be able to get a good grasp with the contractor about their schedule. And we'll convey that information to staff and to you, so you know exactly when this is all happening.
Thank you very much.
We are gonna file extension absolutely just in case, in case we have a
Okay.
two thousand eleven, twelve winter like we had with Sevenfeet. Yeah, we're still gonna file extension.
Safety first.
Absolutely, of course.
No other questions from Commissioners?
And we're in the ballpark of what was anticipated on this one?
Yeah, uh, we actually estimate, Arrow estimated about one point two million dollars for this one.
Oh, wow.
Uh, and going back to municipal just for a second, the last estimate we did, I think, was um, September, September ninth or so.
Yeah.
Municipal was two point two million.
Wow.
That was our estimate. So we're well below.
And and these are just construction costs though. I mean, in the overall project, of course, when you're adding the other, okay.
Yeah.
So but we're still well below what we were estimating.
Even with the design costs, we're way below our estimates, even just for construction alone, so.
Perfect. All right, uh, residents, any questions? Zoom world, nothing? Okay. Entertain a motion to uh, award to the lowest responsible bid uh, to Construction Masters in the amount of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight and seventy-six cents for everyone keeps saying Moore Road Bridge. Is it Moore Road or Moore Drive? Is this just a typo?
Moore Road.
Okay, I just confirm it.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. And a quick third by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion's good, five zero. Moving on, number six.
Uh, five, we're going to item five. Uh, this should be
Mark that off too quick?
Yeah. This is um, an item in regards to your consideration to award a bid to the lowest responsible bidder for a pump house demolition project. The the bids were open December twentieth. We received four bids. Uh, the lowest responsible is Brightfields. That's our recommendation. Brightfields did the horseshoe uh, property demo as well. Um, so they were again low bidder in this capacity. I would pause there and answer any questions or for your consideration of a motion.
Commissioners, any questions?
Sure will, Hal.
I know, no questions from us. Uh, residents, any questions? Chris, any questions? You good to go? All right.
Nice.
All right, and then I will entertain the uh, motion to award to the lowest responsible bid for the pump house demolition project.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner uh, Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero.
Very good. This is where I wanted to jump to item eight. It's in relation to the same project. Uh, this is a request for your consideration to approve an addendum for Arrow Consulting Services to the previously approved PSA one two 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 PW ten. This request is for eleven thousand and forty-one dollars and no cents uh, for services specific to administration and construction observation for that uh, pump house demolition project.
Okay, and this is still covered under the insurance for the uh, the flood damage?
That's correct.
Excellent.
All right, any questions on this, Commissioners? Any questions from residents? Entertain a motion uh, to approve uh, the Arrow's consulting uh, PSA twelve twenty-two dash PW ten in the amount of eleven thousand, forty-one dollars.
Did just have a resident raise for me.
Yes. Yes, Tom.
It's not
Yeah, Tom Parr, five eighty-two Lloyd Avenue. How much is the bid? I I should have asked this when you did number five. What is the the cost on the uh, on the pump house? It doesn't say in the agenda.
Correct.
It's, the low bid was fifty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars even.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
Happy holidays, Mr. Parr, you and Chris.
Same to you. Thank you.
All right, entertain a motion. Do I have a motion?
You had a motion and a second.
All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good, five zero. Going back up to six?
Yes. Uh, my last one, this is uh, item six on the agenda, request for your consideration to have a pay application request made uh, for Lycoming Supply. Uh, this is for the project East Fisherville Bridge Demo Project. The request is in the amount of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Uh, this is for the demo project. The work is done. Um, this is um, there, um, they have one more payment request uh, for uh, some remaining items at the end. That next pay request is around nine thousand. This one is specific uh, for the work. Again, it's done. Everything was done in accordance with the plans and specs.
Okay, the remainder nine thousand, is that just a re-retainer?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on this one? If not, entertain a motion to uh, approve. Moved?
Second.
And move by, moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Say aye.
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 And motion's good, five zero. And I'm very interested in the next one.
Absolutely. Uh, township staff and I have been talking about this for a couple of months. Uh, we created a, uh, a, a PSA professional service agreement to, uh, create a stormwater improvements plan for the township. I, obviously, stormwater's been an issue here. Um, so we presented, uh, PSA one-two-two-two, PW-oh-seven in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to establish a stormwater capital improvements plan, effective and strategic use of funding to improve county townships' existing stormwater infrastructure. So we will use your existing mapping that we've already completed, uh, and come up with a prioritized plan. Uh, we're looking at a ten-year plan. So you can use that for budgeting on a yearly basis to start prioritizing stormwater projects. We'll work very closely with township staff, your public works department, and our GIS, uh, staff, um, to create, uh, a model document that you will then adopt as your strategic plan for stormwater for the next ten years.
So, uh, basically, you'll be able to identify the worst-case scenarios we have in our township.
Yes, we'll do, uh, it's cost estimates and everything for, uh, identified projects. Um, so you'll be able to see that and use it again as a very, as a strategic plan, um, strategic ten-year plan. Uh, we will update the costs every year, uh, given inflation and everything else, and present that back to the, uh, commissioners, uh, on a yearly basis.
And how long would this take?
Uh, we should be able to get this done very quickly. Um, we are probably gonna start meeting mid-January, and we will probably have a final draft back to staff and to you within a few months, maybe two months at the most. So we'll, we'll work on it very quickly.
Okay, good.
It's very exciting.
It is.
This is really-
And I, I do wanna, uh, thank Ray and his Public Works guys. I know they've been going at it this year, trying to clean out some of these pipes, uh, some of the, the sediment that has just built up throughout the years. And I know they were just attacking what they could anyway, but this is excellent to have a plan, uh, and we can act on it. So, thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
All right, well, entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five-zero. I did forget to ask residents if they had questions about it. But, uh, any questions? I know everyone's kinda looking forward to have the stormwater issues, uh, taken care of throughout our township. Nothing in Zoom world?
Just one clarification. This is township-owned, not privately owned.
Correct, yes.
Just so that's clear to everybody, this is municipally owned.
Mr. President, you could have somebody raise for me.
Yes.
Hello, everybody.
How are you doing, Mark?
Mark.
Good. Mark DeYoung, Twenty Beaver Run Road. Doesn't have to do with one part of that, it has to do with the overall, um, plans. It looks like we're moving well ahead with all the projects, which is great. Uh, so I just have a couple of part questions. Have we submitted to PMA or FEMA at the same time, um, for reimbursement of projects completed? And if so, if we've gotten projects or getting payment from FEMA or FEMA, um, where has that money gone? And if not, why haven't we submitted and why hasn't it been paid? Kind of a weird question, but-
Yeah, I think Mark's just asking if we've been able to submit anything to FEMA and had reimbursement.
We have just had projects that have been cleared out. We have just submitted, and, and in the last two weeks, our finance department just submitted, and we are waiting to hear back on that.
Okay. It sounds like the extensions we're gonna be okay with, that we didn't think we were gonna be okay with in the beginning?
I believe so, correct.
It looks that way because we made such great progress on it, because we had the funds available to-
Okay. I know that was a big concern, so getting that money back, and then the question goes forward, we can do this later in time, but, you know, where does that money go? Does it go right back to paying the bonds, which I think residents will be in favor of? So.
Yep. All right. All right, thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right. I think that did it for you guys, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Happy holidays, Ray.
Happy holidays to all of you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Okay, very good.
Enjoy. Thanks again.
Both of you.
Always bringing good news to us.
Whatever, guys. One for each of you. There you go, one for each of you.
Hey, Dave.
Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, guys. Take care, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
All right, next on the agenda, Township Manager. Ms. Danny, what do we have?
Um,
A headache.
That, this would be considered the portion of the hearing for anyone, or, excuse me, the portion of the meeting for anyone that would wish to make any public comment on the twenty-twenty-three budget or the ordinances that go along with that. Uh, the budget has been put out for display, um, it's been on display for more than twenty days. It has been advertised. We have copies here at the township voting and also on the website. So at this time, anybody that wishes to make any comments or questions about the budget or the order.
Hey, commissioners, any comments? I know Commissioner Young had pointed out earlier that they, we do not, uh, we are not increasing any taxes.
Right, and we are keeping services as are. So, services are status quo and we are not increasing taxes.
The trash bill went up a little bit, but that's not, that's just happening everywhere with everything.
We're good.
Well, and then I will reach out to residents. Any, uh, questions from residents? In the Zoom world? Yes, Mark.
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I muted. Um, with inflation going forward, at the rate it's going forward, hopefully it's going down. Um, do we think we have plans to be able to keep this for a while without increasing the taxes? I mean, that's kind of walking a tightrope there.
I, I missed some of that. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Are we keeping?
Well, yeah, with taxes are where they are now, but inflation overall is at seven-point-one percent. It is going down, but it may be tough in the future to keep that going with inflation the way it is.
Would you like us to raise taxes?
Yeah, this is, this is kinda like if you had asked us in, in, at the beginning of, uh, twenty-twenty-one, if we anticipated, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but if you, with that tax, if you had said, do you anticipate raising taxes next year, and the answer would have been no. But then Hurricane Ida hit. So, I mean, I, I believe that we're okay for now, and, uh, hopefully inflation will continue to come down and we'll start getting some better revenue in here with some better businesses, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Okay, that's a good answer. I know it was an outside question, but always interested in the economy and things like that at the same time, so thank you.
Yeah, I think you're right, Mark. Uh, with the inflation, uh, coming, next year is just gonna be rough for a lot of folks. So I'm, I'm glad that we weren't able to, or didn't need to increase taxes.
And it was good our, uh, senior citizens got a, uh, nice raise of, I think it's eight-point-seven percent or so.
They did, yeah.
Yes, we did.
And I would just say that, uh, Paul and I, when we go through, we literally go line by line through every dollar spent. Um, so, and we make staff justify every dollar that, that, uh, is in that budget, so, um, I, I would say our goal is to always be at, uh, no need for an increase. Um, so that, you know, every year we try to go into it looking at it that way, um, and, um, making sure that we're, we're getting the best bang for our buck.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. And was there a second hand?
Mr. Fox?
Yes, Mark.
Mark, long time.
How are you this evening?
Hi, Mark Fox. How you guys doing?
Good.
Excuse me, two-fifty-six Thorn Ridge Drive.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a question. So last year, we, we had a significant increase, and a lot of that money was earmarked for the infrastructure. And, um, and a lot of that, I assume, is payable in twenty-twenty-three, right? So, and I know there's been a lot of cost incurred. I'm not trying to, um, nickel and dime anything here. So isn't there some money left over from what was raised last year that did not go to these infrastructure projects? Because it's not gonna be paid until twenty-twenty-three, and now we're collecting again for that same increase, uh, that was due to the infrastructure costs?
Mark, that, that, uh, bond payment started this year, so that, that we did, uh, start incurring in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, and that payment will continue, um, for the next, is it twenty-nine years? Was it a thirty-year bond? Or was it a? What was it? It wa, I believe it's a thirty-year bond, so that payment will be a, uh, incurred, um, debt for that period of time. The debt fund, that is the old bond, uh, and that fund, uh, uh, unless, uh, other people sitting here make the decision, that will run out in twenty, uh, I believe it's twenty-thirty. Um, twenty-thirty or twenty-thirty-two, something like that. Um, so that debt fund would go away at that period, uh, unless, uh, the board at the time makes a decision to change that. We did have some, uh, staff vacancies that led to, um, some, uh, unused funds from this year, but that will be eaten up by, uh, raises in the next year in the police contract and, um, filling our, our vacant staff in the police, uh, department itself.
And other departments.
And, and other departments, uh, from vacancies, and it, I, the police and, and road crew have just been incredibly, as well as codes, has been incredibly hard to find people and retain them, so, um, there was some excess there, but that will quickly be eaten up by contractual raises.
Uh, does that answer the question, Mark? Do you have some other questions?
I'm not really sure, because I thought that a portion of the, the tax increase was to cover us until we got the money back from FEMA.
Just a portion of that increase. The bond was taken in full in twenty-twenty-two, so that payment started in twenty-twenty-two. Um, that was around three, I don't have it right at the top of my finger, but around three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for that payment. Um, and that, that started in twenty-twenty-two.
I, I think Mark's trying to hint that, are you assuming FEMA is gonna recoup the eight-million-dollar loan that we took?
Yeah, I thought the number was four million, but it, but, um-
Yeah, it was eight, eight-point-one million that we borrowed.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but no, FEMA is only gonna, you know, cents on a dollar as far as reimbursement.
Yet to be determined.
Yeah, yet to be determined. Yeah, we've received zero from FEMA at this point.
So, Mr. Fox, the way that FEMA works, you have to complete the project.
Yeah, I know, I remember.
Yeah, and you then submit, and they let you know how much they are willing to reimburse you for.
Yeah.
So, so we don't know what that number is yet. So that, that, it is a, FEMA does definitely put the cart before the horse and say, build the cart and we'll tell you if we'll give you the horse or not, and that, that's where we're at.
Okay, well, I'm sure everybody will look forward to having the projects done, so, uh, that's the, that's the goal, so. All right, thanks a lot. Thanks for holding the line. Thanks for holding the line.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, same to you guys.
All right. Uh, I saw another hand raised. Excuse me. Yes, Mark.
Just, uh, maybe speaking out of turn, I apologize for that. I think what Mark was hitting at is when that money comes in from FEMA, is it gonna pay the principal of the bond? That's, that's the overall, you know, we borrowed the money from FEMA, or we borrowed the money from the taxpayers to do the projects, and once FEMA and FEMA reimburse us, is that money gonna take down that bond, or we just gonna do the regular bond payment for ten years, which makes no sense?
I don't think we'll know until we know if we're getting anything back, how much it's gonna be. Uh, I think we had left open a couple of possibilities, uh, last year when we went through all of this at length. You know, some of ours, a couple of our bridges, the municipal bridge already had damage from the hurricane that had hit in June first, I think, of, of that year. And it wasn't enough to close the bridge or make it need repairs at that point, but it was enough for FEMA to say, well, it was already damaged, that's not our, our responsibility. So there, there's a lot of variables hanging. Hopefully, we'll get some money back, and hopefully it can go towards paying that. I know that you wanna see, you know, how, make sure we have money for golf carts and make sure that we have money for things like that, so, let's see what happens, and, uh, let's, let's keep our fingers crossed and keep, keep moving forward.
The mon, the money for golf carts was an investment in the, the vehicle, so to make that golf course run better and be profitable.
I understand, Mark, I was being facetious.
I know. At the same time, I mean, I think it's very important, if you borrow money to upstate your kitchen, like we're doing from FEMA, we're updating our bridges, then that money should go right back to paying down the debt.
Agreed. Great.
And, and once that money comes in, we'll, we'll determine that. Any other questions there, Mark? Okay. It's just a presentation, the second line.
The second one, um, the board had asked me when Mike Fuller had come, uh, representing DVR PC regarding the LED retrofit program. Um, we have some unique situations on Lincoln Highway with the lighting. There's lighting we own and we pay the bill on, and then there's lighting we don't own, but we do the maintenance on. I was asked by the board to see what the cost would be to retrofit the ones that we also do the maintenance on. And the cost of that change order would be ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. So if the board is so interested, we can approve that this evening, and also then approve resolution twenty-twenty-two-thirty-three that we have had tabled, um, to award this and report with the project.
Commissioners, any questions on this?
Yeah, I'd like to see everything done at once, the retrofit of the-
Keep in mind, we're not doing the ones who don't.
Right.
Like, Mr. Mullin and I were speaking about that earlier.
Right.
There, there's parts of the street that, that are privately owned.
Yes.
We're not doing those. It's just the ones we maintain.
And if I understand, it's from Bonsville over to Municipal Drive?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's some scattered ones here and there.
Okay, and then the information, uh, about the lighting, the LED lighting, so you can pass along to the shopping center to see if they would want to-
Absolutely.
Upgrade theirs, just to have that continual look. All right, but, uh, I'm, thank you. Thank you for adding the extra. I just, I just would like to see that, you know, all the same U-
Yep.
Right down the, right down the street, so, as far as we can. And someday we'll get some, uh, Christmas decorations on those poles. You know I'm gonna push for it, you know.
I've been pushing for it for years.
So.
You can try to get a boat.
So, uh, well, any other questions on this, commissioners? If not, uh, residents? None at this time? All right, uh, entertain a motion to approve, uh, the Streetscape retrofit change order in the amount of ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Second.
You know Josh was on top of that.
Oh, yeah.
Lincoln Highway. So all in favor? Say aye.
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 All right, good to go. Uh, timeframe?
Um, we were ordering the parts two weeks ago.
Okay.
As soon as they come in.
You said number six?
Number three under myself.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I circled number six. Okay. So, consideration for the adoption of ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-ten, adopting the lighting assessment for the Township Light District.
No.
No, no.
No.
I'm sorry, we're, we're on two different, under, back under number three under me on the agenda.
Although it up, 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 one, there you go, right there.
Uh, Kristen was saying we can untable number six.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, when we get there.
And then when she said three, I'm, okay, lighting.
She's on three of herself.
Okay.
But six, we can untable when we get there.
Okay, all right, let's go back to three. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, we finally have received the final parts, uh, from Havertford Systems for the Zoom room. Very patient before, um, request for consideration by the board to approve invoices Pro zero-five-four-four-zero-five to Havertford Systems in the amount of thirty-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars and fifty cents. Conference room upgrades and microphones.
You finally want to get paid?
Yes, this also was paid for from ARPA funds. It is not general fund tax dollars.
I have one question. They only came up with three handhelds?
That's all we ordered.
Oh.
I mean, how many would we really need?
Well, you know, I, I'm overkill, but if I were doing, I would have ordered two for there and two for here, at minimum, just to make sure that people aren't sharing microphones, but, um-
Headsets.
It's, it's, it, it, it's fine.
That's all we ordered.
That's all we ordered.
Yeah, I wish I'd been in on that conversation, because I would have tried to get some more, so.
I think it was per table?
Well, it also costs.
Yeah. A hundred, two hundred, three hundreds, all they should cost, these are PVs, I think, are they? Or, I mean, or FSM?
The important part is you guys have individual microphones.
Yes, 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 yes.
From these tables, no more than one person speaks at a time anyways.
Good enough for now. All right, well, she already read it, so entertain a motion for this.
So moved.
Moved. Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Which is good, five zero. Yes, Mark.
Yeah, two fifty-six, Lynn Rich. I have a question, somebody who may not be at every meeting, and I haven't been lately, so I apologize for that, but is this an additional to what we've already spent? Because frankly, I find often from, as a spectator, the audio is very difficult to hear, especially like if I'm attending another meeting, like not necessarily the commissioners, but like one of the other meetings. I forget which one, but Ray's there also, and I'm texting them, I'm texting them, telling them that I can't, are they planning? Yeah, it's terrible. So I was curious if this is extra money, or this was part of what was already budgeted, and what can they do to improve the quality?
Well, this was already budgeted, this was a part of our ARPA funds. It may be user error.
Like, right now. I don't know, Mark, if you can't hear Ray, he's speaking right now.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
It's more of an educational part on the audience.
When did we get the new mics?
Two weeks ago.
Okay, so this is, this is kind of new as far as these mics. How's tonight's meeting, Mark?
Well, ironically, I couldn't hear Ms. Denny when she was, when she was reading the ordinance about paying the money for the thing.
Okay.
And I couldn't hear you in the speakers very well either, I think you have to do what we call eat the mic.
Get a little closer. Ray's loud enough.
Yeah.
Okay, now I appreciate the feedback there, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto the ordinance and resolutions, the first one for consideration is the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero eight, setting the real estate tax rate for twenty twenty-three at four point zero eight eight mils, which is showing no increase from last year's.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Which is good, five zero. Forgot to ask for comments, but I will do that on the next one. Request for consideration to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, imposing an annual fire protection tax of point six mil, which shows no increase from last year.
No increase.
Or for the last six years, might I add. So moved in second. All right, any questions? Any questions from residents on the last two items? All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion's good, five zero, that was motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. Request for consideration, the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, adopting the lighting assessments for the Township Light District.
Question on that, just, I believe that once we have the LEDs in, we will be looking at that again, how it affects some people.
Yeah, so that's gonna take probably all of next year to, to and just remember, there's a payback in that, you know, they're seeing some of the companies helping us with some of the, they get, they get part of the savings, so it's gonna take a few years for that to work through. But we will be revisiting that to figure out where the, where the costs actually are. So we'll, we will see a savings, but it's gonna be a couple of years before we actually realize the full savings, because there is a time period.
Was it a five-year?
Five-year payback, yes. Until we break even.
Yeah, it's great, I think I didn't phrase my question right. I recall the neighborhood, I think it was Tom Parr asking about this, about his specific things in that neighborhood.
Yeah, so we are gonna work on that, but the, because each neighborhood has its own fee structure, and when we, when we raise fees, which we haven't done in a long time, that, that fee just gets raised for everybody equally, and not based on the actual usage. So once we get the LEDs and the payback, we will know exactly what it's costing us. And we can, we could probably equitably distribute that cost.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Parr has his hand up.
What do you want?
Yes, Tom.
Thank you for not forgetting about me and my light district, Josh, I appreciate that. The, I figured it was gonna be a time thing, I knew it wasn't going to change overnight. I do have a question, and you can write this down, and you can tell me in a month or so. The light at Geo Carlson and Lloyd Avenue, is that in the light district?
That might be one that the township just pays, I don't know, we would have to look at that.
Okay, all right, I mean, because honest to God, my neighbor pays more than anybody in our neighborhood, because unfortunately, he has front yardage and side yardage. And it's just something that I had been asking, I was gonna ask about last time when the light district or the lights came up, but it's not a big deal, no biggie, and again, thank you for remembering about us and our Colonial Lights.
You know, Tom, we could hold you hostage to give you an answer on this, till you turn on your camera and show us your Santa Claus hat, like you had on last night.
I, I don't have it, it's in my car, it's in the car for the grandkids tomorrow, dressing up as Santa.
But Tom, one, one thing that, even if we can't adjust those rates right away, the, the improved lighting will be, you know, dramatic, so. And the quality of the light, so that, a little comfort to that.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, 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 I'm, you convinced me when this first came up, that this is, this is plus, plus, plus. I mean, these, these lights are, they, let's see, I've been here since eighty-three, I think they came in at like eighty-four, give or take. So any, any improvement with these things that are here is a definite plus for everybody in the neighborhood. So, yeah, I can't wait, it'll be a good deal.
Happy holidays, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Tom.
Same to you, same to everybody.
So moved.
Second.
Going to lights, okay, move second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thought we already had a motion, but.
You might have.
All right, we'll go with that one. All right, next we have a request for consideration to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven, establishing the annual tax sufficient to pay interest and principal on any indebtedness of the township in the amount of point four four mils.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any questions? Questions from residents on this one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. Next, request for consideration, the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve, the final twenty twenty-three municipal budget. Big one.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any questions? Any questions from residents? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Once again, motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. Think there for a second.
Don't do too much of that.
We have a tabled resolution, entertain a motion to untable?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Request for consideration, the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three, authorizing the township president and secretary to sign all documents necessary to complete a contract for installation services with the R Moore and Sons Electric for the LED services in collaboration with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission LED Light Upgrade Program. A mouthful.
So, second.
Moved in second, any other questions? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, five zero. Number seven, request for consideration of the resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six, authorizing the amendment of the twenty twenty-three non-uniform MMO, minimum municipal obligation. Any questions on this?
No, I have a question.
Uh-oh.
We have a question. What, what was the change in this?
It was, I believe it was like a hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Up or down?
Up.
Okay. That's it.
Entertain a motion? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Evans, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Which is good, five zero. That was it?
No, there's more.
There's more.
There's more.
Now we have minutes, okay, request, consider approval for the November seventeenth Board of Commissioner Minutes. Any changes, additions?
On November seventeenth, the call to order says Commissioner Evans called the board, and also about pledge allegiance to the flag. I think he was on vacation.
I was. Yeah, Commissioner Evans.
Paul was on vacation, so you have to put Jane Kennedy as vice president.
I thought I saw that.
Oh, oh, yeah, you're right, yeah, the first line, yeah, call to order, Commissioner Mullin, who was sitting in the Caribbean Sea at the time. Called the meeting, the order.
Pledge allegiance.
I was pledging something down there, I will.
But anyway, that's the only thing I could find, everything else is good.
Good catch. Good catch, I skipped down, I didn't even read it.
Thanks.
So Denise, you have that? But I was thinking about everyone.
Sure.
Scooner bar. All right, any, any other changes needed for November seventeenth? I would abstain myself, since I was not here. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four and one abstain. And that was Commissioner Evans, and second by Commissioner Kennedy. And November thirtieth, Board of Commissioner Minutes, any questions on those?
I had, that there was a word typo that I sent, Denise already fixed it, so.
Okay.
Second.
So moved in second. Just seeing if I scribbled anything.
Nope.
All right, no other questions, moved in second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And minutes have been approved, moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. And last but not least, acknowledging the receipt of the October eighteenth, approved Planning Commission Minutes.
So moved.
Moved. Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. Finance Department, Ms. Wong, what do we have?
Got checks?
Yeah.
Microphone, Lisa.
Yeah, microphone.
Oh, yeah, microphone.
I anticipate another good finish this year. The, I know I've said it before, but I can't thank the directors enough for scrutinizing every penny before it got to me, so that makes my job a little bit easier. As I've said before, it's not just a fourth quarter task, it's, you know, myself and my staff look at the budget on a daily basis, just via paperwork that comes through the office, receipts that come in, et cetera. Work closely with, with Township Manager Denny, who also, you know, puts her signature on a multitude of expenses that are necessary, so I wanna, I wanna thank her too for cooperation. I think we're gonna end up with a nice, healthy, fun balance again. Golf Course has been coming into its own, which is nice. CTMA also is pulling their own weight, so it's nice to see well-rounded all the way throughout the entire township. Proud to be here, so thank you again for letting me come back every day. That is, that is all I have.
You better keep coming back, thank you.
Any questions, or?
I have one question on, it says on line item, code enforcement revenues, see note, but I don't see a note. I'm on the revenue summary, year to date. It says, on the code enforcement fees line.
Oh, so our budget for that, we had something come in, it's, it should even itself out next month. Something came in, it was entered in correctly when we caught it, we had to reverse it, but I can't process it until December, so you'll see the correction in December.
All right, and then it looks like moving some investments, the public had really paid off, so, good work there. That's all.
And of course, I just gotta give a shout out to the golf course. Here, listed at the end of November, you're sixty-nine thousand in the black, but as I spoke to Lisa a little while ago, what are we, closer to seventy-two now?
Excellent, once we post tomorrow, on Tuesday, we'll be at seventy-five, so don't spend anything. At seventy-five, I'm sticking with it, I'll give you an update on twelve-thirty, and hopefully we'll, we'll still be there.
All right, well, that's, that's good news, thank you.
No, not this.
You never know. Maybe people buy rounds for Christmas gifts. Okay, so we have a check run, forty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-two to forty-nine thousand four oh two, with also a manual check run at two eighty-four to two eighty-five, and two eight five three, you got a four-digit? Is it, is it?
Yeah, John, I was kinda typing a little too fast in that other manual check.
Yeah. Oh, really? Oh.
All right, that's it.
You win.
Couldn't delete it and just redo it? Hey, to me, I like it all sequential. That one item's gonna stick out.
Yeah.
Payroll service.
Oh, ADP, how's ADP?
Get a better feel.
Do you still think it'll all come out in one W two? For the employees? Okay. Okay, everything was updated.
All right, be nice.
Very good. Thank you.
Are you aware of the point oh seven employee withholding that's coming up? Yeah, I know, I know. I saw that, and I'm like, wow, it's been a while, I mean, as long as I've been in business, I don't ever remember it going up. I did need to just recuse myself of one check, because it was to myself for the municipal authority. Check number four nine three eight four. Anyone else? Any other comments?
No.
Entertain a motion to approve a check run.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy, all in favor? Say aye.
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 I was happy that my unemployment number went down. I was happy that my, uh, uh, unemployment, uh, number went down, you know, the rate. Yeah, so the employees get it, but, uh, save me a couple bucks. So, all right, uh, next, civil service list candidates.
Woo-hoo!
Aye.
All right, on, uh, November thirtieth, the Board of Commissioners extended conditional offers of employment to five, uh, police applicants on the current civil service eligibility list. Four of the five accepted the conditional offers and one declined, leaving one remaining vacancy to be filled. Uh, in accordance with the civil service rules, the commission met publicly on December twelfth. Uh, to certify three names to fill the remaining vacancies. From the three names certified, the Board of Commissioners will consider extending a conditional offer of employment. To Renine McBell to begin police academy training in January twenty twenty-three. Uh, pursuant to a cadet sponsorship agreement with the township. Uh, the township will be paid tuition and salary. Uh, while the applicant is in training and will be reimbursed seventy-five percent of the training cost and forty-five percent of the applicant's salary by the state upon graduation. Uh, so I will entertain a motion to consider a, uh, conditional offer of employment to Renine McBell.
So moved.
Second.
And to approve her cadet sponsorship agreement. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, five zero. Good luck, chief.
Yes.
All right, next we have, uh, handicap parking sign located at thirty-seven seventeen Bungalow Glade. Ms., uh, Denny, wanna highlight this?
I'm gonna hand this off to the chief and Mr. Stackhouse. Uh, they had a, and Mr. Stackhouse is handing it off to the chief. I thought he was parking over.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, we had this conversation earlier, it's on the street, sir, so that would be your problem.
In all fairness, you went in.
So the resident approached township, the resident, um. Possesses a handicapped placard, we verified that. Uh, and requested the township to accommodate her by locating an area along the curb. And, uh, posting it as handicapped so that she could park her vehicle, uh, in front of the home. Uh, Mr. Stackhouse and I. Conducted a site visit, uh, where we could, uh, adequately accommodate her and make proper placement of a handicap sign. It's a township street, there are no prohibitions on the street, uh, as far as, uh, parking restrictions, uh, so. It's up to the board to consider and grant a handicap parking space for the woman, and then. I will hand it back off to, uh, Director Stackhouse at Public Works to, um, I guess you would have to do a PA one call. Uh, and place a sign.
No, we've never done an ordinance in the past. Uh, it does, but not, we never have for individual, for, for individual space, there's no parking, uh, there's no, no parking on that street whatsoever. There's no designated parking space on that street whatsoever. Just for, how would you word it for just one parking space? Well, I mean, I would owe, I, in this particular case, I mean, I would also, a- and I mean, I would defer to the chief, I would not be opposed to. Checking on that and bringing it back to another meeting first.
Come on, we just tabled this and discuss it after the solicitor has time to.
I would rather. Well, then I, I would rather establish a pro- proceed, a, a more formal procedure than.
Like an application.
Yeah, it'll stop, it'll slow people down from.
Have we done this before?
We.
Township?
I, I believe we have.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember, it's been a while, but I believe we have done this.
I, I like the guidance of our, uh, solicitor. Okay.
So.
So we need an or, we need an ordinance then?
I believe so, yes. While we're doing this, we should probably put together a formal application too.
Yeah, I can give you examples.
Is this person a senior?
Well, and also keep in mind, it will not be her spot. Any person with a handicap placard can spot, park in that spot, it's, it's not for that.
Cause it's on the street.
Is it, is it in front of her house, or is it?
It's, yes, but any person.
Anybody could park there, this handicap.
Yes.
She doesn't own the street.
Uh, that's a really hard question that we may have to discuss in a staff meeting, being it's on the street, but you put up the sign.
I just, I, 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 I wanna make sure we do this right and, and dot the i's, cross the t's. Uh, I also wanna make sure we're not. Stretching this out too long for someone who is in need.
No, we can, we can do this within two weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
We, we meet three weeks from now.
So we'll have the answers for you and.
January?
Yep.
Okay.
And also, um. Would it be a, uh, I, I, that, it's funny. Funny, but, uh, we have a, a friend in, uh, the borough. Who's next door neighbor had a handicap spot in front of their house. And passed away, and the new resident was using the handicap spot as guest parking for their friends. So our friend had to petition.
To have it removed.
To get it removed, can we have some clause in our ordinance that says if you move or no, you know, for some reason, that it's, it comes out?
Part of that application process, yeah.
Excellent, yay. And, uh, do we need an application? Do we really need an application, do we streamline that a little so we don't have to have an application?
I mean, I think in the borough, they just do a letter, they have, they have letters of people asking for it, and then they attach that to your agenda.
Let's do that, let's do that. Yeah, like, let's do the letter. Let's do the letter.
I serve at the will of the board and.
Chief loves the letter.
There was a, a, um, exchange regarding applications.
Yeah.
I like.
Or the lack thereof.
Yeah.
I, I think applications are good, especially if you have to trace them, put them in a work order system, and then.
Yes.
I'm sick of you two ganging up on me. I've had it.
Make it the three of us.
It's a day before the night before Christmas.
This is right.
Okay, all right, all right. So we'll wait to hear from you guys, uh, at our next township meeting.
And then just back to your point, resident action does have a place to park right now.
Okay. Oh, excellent.
We will have something back.
And, and let her, if you don't mind letting her know that we're, 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 we're working on it, and, uh, that we wanna make sure she has it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I just wanna take a, a moment to thank you for your support in twenty-two. We're optimistic about twenty-three.
Yes.
And Merry Christmas, have a safe, happy and healthy new year.
Thank you.
You, yours, all of you.
Me too.
Yes.
And everyone.
Everyone.
We're not done.
We're not done. Mark's gonna, gonna close this out with a song.
No, I have something.
I have, I have another additional business. We discussed this last night at the historical commission. Uh, the Chester County Planning Commission and Chester County Historic Preservation Network have, uh, are, are. Having their, uh, twenty-ninth year of town tours and village walks program in twenty twenty-three. The twenty twenty-three, and I believe we did carve a quarter at one time, the twenty twenty-three tour theme is agricultural heritage of Chester County. Well, how do you like that? We got a farm called Spackman Farm here.
Woo.
They've invited us to apply to be a part of it. If we were selected, uh, the, the tours, it's a coordinated series of walking tours, uh. From, that will happen in different locations each week on Thursday evenings between June eighth and mid-August. We would really like to participate, we have to have our application in by January thirteenth, or it's too late. Um. We understand that there's some things that we would have to do, I mean, no, it would not be open buildings, we would like to have the, possibly the Smokehouse and Spring House. Open and make sure that we've done some things, we will do things to fill holes, to make sure it's safe down there. House would be closed, but I think that it would be another step towards getting us, uh, going. Uh, so if everyone could think about that, and maybe we'll talk about it at the next meeting, cause we'll, we meet before the thirteenth, correct?
Yeah, we meet on the twelfth, I believe, right?
Yeah, so if we can get that on the agenda.
If, if the historical committee could just kinda put together.
We will.
Okay, put that together, and maybe we can put that on the agenda for, well, for approval from this board if we're gonna.
Excellent, you know, these people come to town, they come to town, right?
Yeah.
And wow, it's seven thirty, I'm a little hungry. You know, we're here at five thirty, we missed dinner at seven thirty, oh, look, there's a place to eat here in town, you know? This is how it works. So. That's that.
Any other additional business? Public comment. Oh, we have someone, George?
George!
Good evening.
Seven oh nine Cowan Meeting House Road. I'm a member of several fraternal organizations and. Societies, clubs, uh, that have membership that comes through, from, throughout the county.
Mm-hmm.
And we meet in various places, many times traveling on Route three twenty-two. And a month ago, the word got out that three twenty-two was possibly going to be closed temporarily, but fully closed, so I've been getting a lot of questions about what's been happening there. Said, I'm sorry, we just don't have the word yet. I wanna thank you personally this evening for posting on the township website what you've got from PennDOT on December nineteenth, that, that, that project has been indefinitely postponed. There's more detailed information there on the website, so thank you on behalf of myself and all the members of the organizations I belong to for providing the information that they can now feel comfortable knowing at this point.
Thank you.
Kudos goes to Ray and Abby.
Yeah, yep.
They, they, Ray, Ray Stackhouse and Abby Swan have been really active working on that and staying up on PennDOT, so the kudos goes to those two.
And I would echo the chief's, uh, best wishes, uh, happy, uh, holidays and safe, uh, new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just tag onto that, uh, on, uh, after we got the notice from Ray, I had posted on my, uh, account Facebook page. And I said that the key, the real key wording in, in their statement is. After schools are out, nothing, you know, this is not gonna be happening until summer, at, at, at the earliest, so. Knock on wood, it won't be too big of a disturbance.
Uh, there is no good time. Unfortunately, there is no good time, but. It's a necessity. All right, uh, any other public comment?
I just wanna thank the township staff.
Oh, my goodness.
The first responders in Cowan Township.
Yeah.
Um, as well as, uh, my fellow members of the board, we had a really productive year.
Yeah.
Um, you know, uh, and to top it off tonight with, uh, finishing out the LEDs. Um, you know, something that I've worked on for nearly eighteen years, and to finally get, see that come to fruition, as well as. Two years of hard work to get LERTA, uh, just, uh, a week ago, um, so. I wanna thank everybody for their hard work and wish you the best, uh, Christmas and New Year and holidays, thank you.
You, yes. Let's keep the band together.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I definitely wanted to thank the staff, Kristen, uh, all the directors, and everybody that works in this township. Um, you know, what we've been through this year, in the last few years, I mean, everyone's, they've stuck it out. And, and we have to be thankful, kept this, uh, township running, kept it going the entire time, so. And, uh, of course, to our police, our fire department, even our EMS, yes. So, we're all a team here, so thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, and I, and I will say, you know, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, everyone, and.
All of you.
Have a Happy New Year. And if anyone else wants to chime in?
We actually have a resident.
We have someone with their.
Okay.
Mr. DeMayo?
Is that you, Pete?
Hi, Pete.
Uh, you're muted there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want, uh, two things, I just want to, uh, thank you from the Coates Larry Public Library for your support. This year and ongoing support to the commissioners, the Cowan Township staff and community, our library's doing beautifully, so thank you always for, uh, the support, and I did tell you previously, I would be. Uh, representing the board to, coming to the meetings, I go to all the governmental meetings for the board, so I was just at East Fowlfield with you, I'll be gone to Coatesville. And then I need South Coatesville, Modena, uh, West Bradford, when I get through the rotation, I will be back, so thank you again, we appreciate all that you've done and. And your support is wonderful, and as a, a represent, as a community member, Levin Harvest Drive, thank you for the municipal bridge. That stress has now turned into joyful stress, so thank you so much for the municipal bridge. That's, that's, that's the new year gift, so thank you, but from the board, from all our board to all of you, thank you and have a wonderful, uh, two, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Sure.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
No, and I, I did wanna point this out, I, uh, we have three employees that actually, uh, received a certificate for fifteen years of service with our township.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, Joe Arvey, um.
Yes.
Johnny Huggins from Public Works.
Huggy.
Uh, Joe is from, uh, Coates Department, and Chris, I have yours in my truck, so I. I've been trying to get over to the golf course, but, uh.
For only nine ninety-nine, you can have it tonight.
Fifteen years of service at a township, that, that's impressive, so thank you, thank you all for that.
Yes.
And wish our Public Works, uh, Department, uh, good luck with the storms coming.
Yes.
Ready to go.
Okay.
Safe.
And, and honestly, they do not have to fix that shutter on the schoolhouse. Okay.
Very good.
Uh, so, and, uh, so we do have the Christmas tree lit up, or, or?
Yeah, that's a good point, I appreciate you bringing that up, the Christmas tree.
Oh, the mic is.
Just to save myself some aggravation over the next couple days, the Christmas tree is lit and the sleigh, the sign, and some of the other things are not lit, and the schoolhouse is lit. We had some electrical issues that got resolved at the eleventh hour to get the tree up, and it will be lit.
Okay.
Till next week.
Excellent.
It won't go off during the day, it'll stay.
It looks great.
Okay, all right, yeah, just, yeah, I drove by last couple nights, it's been dark. Uh, everything else was lit up, just the tree was not, yeah.
Dark.
Thanks, Ray, I, I appreciate it. It's Christmas spirit, okay, any, anything else? You're, you're, you're ready to hit that button?
Yep, we're ready.
All right, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So move a second, all in favor?
Aye.